Okay, good evening. Thank you for being here. Welcome back, everyone. Been out all this whole evening. I'd like to call to order our school committee meeting tonight. It's January 5th, 2015. It is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped, and I'll just ask if anyone else is to just please raise their hand. Thank you very much. If we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have our roll call starting with Elizabeth Marcien Voucher.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Fuchero.
Giordri Mayu.
Gordon Smith, Super Tenor Schools.
Bill Fonseca.
Teri Oldge, Assistant Superintendent for Business. Kathy Salati, Recording Secretary.
Jack Lohnhand, Student Representative.
Perfect. All right, moving on, we have the approval of December 15th, 2014, regular session meeting minutes.
I move to approve the December 15th, 2014 regular session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's been made. I have a second, and seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those pose nay. That carries forward, five zero. We also have some executive session meeting minutes. If you can get a motion on that, please.
Move to approve the executive session meeting minutes of December 15th, 2014.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those pose nay. Carries forward, five zero. Okay. We have our committee and subcommittee communications, so we'll just go around the room and start with the cuts.
I'm just gonna start with ELEF is having their dinner dance coming up on the 7th. It's $60 a person. You can order tickets online if you go to their website.
I echo your concern about black and white.
What is black and white? Is that black tie?
Well, last year, no. Last year, they had such a great response, where everybody was wearing red.
That's school colors.
And it was kind of a val- it is, but it was also kind of, it was around Valentine's Day.
February 7th is close.
So this year- This year's neighbors, neighbor in town.
No, it was also heart awareness. Yes, it was for breast heart awareness. It was for Valentine's Day. It was because we're red. But this year, they thought that they would just try to have another theme. So every year, I think they want to do something. This year, they picked-
It's not black tie, though, right?
It is not black tie.
Black and white is not mean black tie.
You can wear-
No, I wasn't gonna be black.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be the least dressed guy, although I usually am.
I, you know, I, I like to the red.
Well, I'll find something dark.
Black and white.
And it's gonna be black. Cool, very cool.
Yep.
February 7th.
February 7th, yep.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Gregory Thompson?
Just an update. We had a unit aid negotiation meeting on the 15th of last month, and things were going well. Most of the cleanup, as we call it, language is we've come to some sort of agreement on, and we're starting to look at the meat of the whole contract. Yeah, so, going well, though.
We look forward to hearing that.
Yes, okay.
All right, Richard Chair.
I just want to reiterate what we said at our last meeting. I did participate again in the senior projects. There's a lot of fun. Someone here did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
It really is. It was just, you know, I think the combination of the students, of course, presenting is the best part, but also the fact of the outreach in the community. They have business people there, resource people there. It's just a wonderful collaboration between the community and the schools.
All right. And Bill Fonseca?
Okay, LPBDC Student of the Month for December, Madison Reed, Automotive Technology, too. To echo what Mr. Fuchero just said, yeah, it was a great, great day, senior projects. It's amazing what these kids are, what they're doing now, because they're getting more experience in the program. So it was really a good day. Policy Subcommittee Riveting Material will be meeting Friday.
Okay. With more policies to bring up to us?
Absolutely.
Actually, we should bring up that Matt Malone-
Right.
That was at the end of the, came by, which was, I think he was impressed with the school. I really did.
And then-
On December 19th, Matt Malone, Secretary of Education, visited the high school and took a look at not only what we were doing, senior projects, but also visited some of our classrooms and was impressed. We made his Twitter feed.
Yeah.
That's right.
So we have to work on getting the-
Sounds good.
Right.
Exactly.
And unfortunately, with the incoming governor, he has been replaced already.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be tired anyway.
And, Jack, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
Just two things. Once, get on to senior projects. I think the general consensus of all the kids was, we were pretty nervous going into it, and then everybody, you know, afterwards, everybody loved it. So I certainly had a great time doing it. I think it was great, so I hope that that, nothing continues on. And then, secondly, we just have finals on the 14th, 15th, and 16th.
Yes.
Halfway.
Yes.
Halfway over, which is a little scary.
Yeah.
Before, next week.
Yes, so it's next week.
So they can enjoy that.
Next year.
After.
Yes.
Exactly.
And I just also want to mention the senior projects, too. I think, you know, Mr. MacGrady did a great job organizing all of it, and what they did with the judges, they, we went around and introduced ourselves, and I would say, majority of them were graduates of East Long Meadow High School at some, what some, you know, during some years, sort of the person not only introduced themselves, but also what year they graduated from the high school. So it's fun for me, because I didn't grow up here to see these people come back and actually bring them, you know, make themselves a part of the high school also. And I'll put that out there, too, that Mr. MacGrady's always looking for other people to join our panel, so if you're interested, it's just get ahold of him, and especially if you have business in town, he's always looking to network for the students and help everyone out. So it really was a lot of fun. I look forward to doing it again.
And before you know it, the email will be going back out that this, the springtime season-
The next round.
Next round.
And we have all the students doing it this time.
Right, that's why-
But it'll be much less.
No, but I'm saying, but by the, this is the first full year that they've ever seen her doing it.
Yeah, but this time around, we'll be less.
Oh, that's good.
A couple of classes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Now move on. We're gonna, I'll mention the part that I always forget, the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. So if there's any visitor here that would like to address the committee, this would be the time. And seeing none, we're gonna move on. We have 5.1.1, Discussion of Opiate Awareness Night.
Okay, we have three individuals with us tonight. We have Diana Gomes and Haskell from our middle school, and Kelly Lombard, our nurse leader. And they're gonna walk us through not only sort of how this all began, but then where we're going with this opiate awareness evening in February, and give us some of the background and partnerships that we've created through this work.
Great. Well, welcome, everyone. It's nice to see everyone.
Thank you for having us. And I'm just gonna pass all these handouts of just some of the topics that we're gonna be talking about today. I'm not sure if I made enough copies for everyone.
Yeah.
Great.
Did you save the date, too?
I'll pass that out after the end.
As most of you are aware, and I'm sure that you've been listening to the news most recently, back in March, Deval Patrick declared a state of emergency, public health emergency, with a number of opiate-related deaths in Massachusetts. This news brought up our Chief Melis, who contacted Kelly Lombard and reached out to her and asked if there could be-
As well as for instance.
Yes.
Yes.
If there could be a professional development done with the school nurses, guidance, support staff, and some of the school psychologists, to really talk about ways that we could raise awareness of this epidemic and growing issue. So back in April of last year, we met, and what came of this professional development was the beginning of a committee that was started, which is the Opiate Awareness Committee. So this committee consists of school counselors, Chief Melis, our resource officer, police officers in town, our school nurse, school leader, health teacher. And we've been meeting since then to try to develop ways to raise awareness here in the community. So one of the first things that we did is Chief Melis introduced us to Marie Graves, who is from, she is the Program Director of the Springfield Public Health and Human Services Department, and she has been able to help us and has been part of this committee as well in developing surveys that we can give students, both in the middle school, the eighth-grade students, and at the high school. And the purpose of the survey was to ask students about the misuse of prescription drugs and medication. We were able to survey eighth-grade students as well as some of the high school students. And some of the data that we got back is what's helped us to move forward and be able to think about putting together a parent night here in town, which, right now, we have tentatively scheduled for February 25th, and we are reaching out to members of the community to put together a night where the community and parents can come together and listen to ways that they can keep their kids safe. And we're gonna be calling it a youth safety night. So we definitely need all the support that we can get, as well as help with getting the word out. So our purpose today is really just to be able to tell you a little bit about how this committee came about, the surveys that we did, and the actual plan for that evening. So right now, our plan is to have three different breakout sessions, and we're hoping to hold this at Burtston Park Middle School in the cafeteria. So we would welcome parents in the community, and we have been brainstorming different ways that we can advertise it to the community. And we'd have an introduction of speakers. We're hoping to have Chief Melis, as well as members of the East Long Meadow Police Department, along with a representative from the DA's office as one of the speakers or group. And then also have a speaker from a local pediatrician, as well as our district doctor, Dr. Clark. And lastly, we'd have Marie Graves, and she would talk about risk and protective factors. So we would introduce parents to the speakers, and we'd have three breakout sessions. We'd kind of split up parents into three different groups and have an A, B, C rotation of sessions, where they could move around the building. That way, everybody who goes could move to each session and hear each speaker. And each session would focus on, for example, Chief Melis and the DA's department would talk about specifics such as our actual statistics from East Long Meadow, things that they have been doing to be able to support the community, and really to raise awareness about educating parents to ask for help and to know that it's okay to call if they need help, and not to be so concerned about what the consequences might be, to let them know that they're there to help. And also to give some information from the DA's office and background on some of the things that they do to provide support and resources. And then our, the local pediatricians, they would talk about different ways to keep your kids safe in terms of how to store medication, how to talk to your kids about substance abuse, about the misuse of prescription drugs and medication. And then lastly, Marie Graves would talk about protective factors and things that you can get your children involved in that can help to keep them safe. And after these sessions, we would have vendors that would be outside of the cafeteria, representatives from places such as the Phoenix House, Tapestry Health, Beaville Health Network, local therapists that would offer pamphlets, contact information, resources, so that parents could leave there with having something, some actual concrete resources that they could leave with. And once we would reconvene in the cafeteria, we'd also have parents fill out an evaluation form about how the evening went, what they liked, what they wished they could have heard more about. And then the purpose of that evaluation is for us to be able to put on another event, maybe in April, and be more specific about, maybe even have a parent forum with a panel of parents, peoples whose lives have been affected by substance abuse and addiction, to actually speak to the community and offer support. And that would come from those evaluation forms, specifically on what parents want to know more about. So currently, we have a date set for February 25th at Burtston Park Middle School from 6:00 to 8:30. We have been in contact with these speakers. We're waiting for confirmation from them. We do have data that we've collected and we've gathered from the student surveys that we'd be more than happy to share with all of you if you'd like to see the data. We're still not certain about how we want to present the data. We're hoping that we can hear from you with any suggestions. But the goal is to be able to start talking about this and to start raising awareness and let parents know that it's okay to talk about it, know that there are supports and that there are resources that they can reach out to, and be able to offer some kind of follow-up afterwards. It's something that we're hearing a lot about, and just recently, we, you know, checked the Boston Globe, and there was 185 deaths in Massachusetts alone from opioid overdoses. And it's, it's a growing issue that everybody really needs to be talking about and needs to be discussing to keep our kids safe. So this is the first step that we're taking to try to raise awareness and to be able to help with this. And I don't know if Ann Haskell or Kelly have any, any more that they want to add.
There are a lot.
We also-
I think our meetings have taken a turn. We thought we were just gonna talk about opiates, and then we thought, really, we should talk about youth safety. So that's why we decided to do the three different workshops. You know, we want to provide babysitting, maybe, have, yeah, have some type of food for parents, and definitely find out from them what topics they would like to hear about in the future.
Simone, I think that you, I was gonna ask for clarification. Wonderful presentation, Ms. Gomes. Very easy to follow, but pardon my ignorance, but opiate goes right over my head. I don't know if I'm like any other parent. I'm allowed to choose it's a youth safety night rather than an opiate. What is an opiate? I mean, generally, I mean-
Pain medicine.
Huh?
Pain medicine, like OxyContin, OxyContin.
My kid's, if my kid's out, is doing marijuana every night, he shouldn't come, they don't have to come to this meeting.
Probably.
But you see, my, but you see the point I'm making, though. It sounds very narrow to me, opiate.
Right. So-
Any substance abuse.
Okay, that is, okay.
Alcohol.
That's, okay, that's what I'm saying, okay.
So you're gonna say broadened to youth safety?
I like youth safety.
Yeah.
I realize there was some wrong there.
I like that. We had in- That is our topic. Senior seminar, the first student who approached is, and I just sent, just emailed his name to you. He spoke about his struggle with drug use and how he came back from, it was phenomenal. I was just like, oh, my God. Like, I was just really impressed with this kid. And he, Mr. Keller had asked him, would you be interested in maybe participating? And he seemed like he was all over. I think he wants to talk about it. He wants parents to understand what he went through, and maybe if not for this time, for the next time. I think he, this is what he wants to do. He wants to help people. Yeah, yeah. And so I was really impressed. So you might want to reach out to him, and he might even be able to help you from his standpoint, because he knows what, he knows how to get around parents seeing and, and what they're missing, and he might be able to help you out, too.
That's actually what we're, we're hoping to do, is that this parent night would be first to really bring up the discussion, to start educating parents, to raise awareness. And the following forum would be exactly for that. And I have talked to the school counselors at the high school, and they did mention that to me.
Okay.
There is also parents in the community who have reached out to us and to others and have, you know, feel really strongly that they want to be part of this and that they want to be able to have their voices heard and share their story, which is also part of coping for them as well.
That's good. Because you can't close. You know that it happens. You know that it's here. Nobody's protected from it. No one's safe from it. And I think it's, it's good to show that we're not sticking our head in the sand.
That's right.
Parents, K through 12?
Yes.
I'm gonna go next.
So I actually have, I have a save the date that I'll pass around to you guys that you can keep. So this is just to save the date, but we're having, once we have our speakers confirmed, we're having a flyer, where the flyer will have more details about who the speakers are, what the topics of conversation are that they're going to be discussing, and we'll be able to say more about what youth safety really means, what are the topics that we're really going to be discussing, because I know that it's kind of a broad topic to just say youth safety.
Right.
So the flyers will really clarify that a little bit more.
Now, are you gonna open this up to any of the other districts and, like, the other towns? Not this one. Oh, okay.
No, maybe eventually. We have attended meetings. Diane and I went to a meeting, was it November, end of November. We actually collaborated with Springfield. Chickaby was there. Holyoke was there. Everybody's dealing with the same problem.
Right.
And I think the idea is to share the collaboration, share the resources, don't reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Ann and I went to a, a conference that was free up in Greenfield. It was phenomenal.
Amazing.
You know, tips for parents, what to look for. We have many handouts, just increasing awareness and how to get the word out.
See, actually, through all this work, we've signed on with a partnership with the Strategic Planning Framework, which Marie Graves, the lady that has been mentioned tonight, runs out of Springfield. And so we're partnering with that group, but in that group is Chickaby, Springfield, and there may be one other.
Colia.
Colia, thank you.
I mean, this is a hot button topic, just even opiate use. The incoming Attorney General came out saying today that she's gonna form an internal task force to start addressing this problem statewide. So you guys have grabbed it, grabbed the bull by the horns to start letting everybody know that this is an ongoing problem, and it's the silent, let's, you know, silent kill it, because people don't understand how ea, how easy it is to get hooked on these, you know, painkilling medic, painkilling medications. As long, as well as everything else that Kelly, you just mentioned about just overall safe, you know, awareness.
Right.
Youth awareness, so.
You know, think about when your kid's going, they're listening to you, and how many pills do they give you?
Absolutely.
My son just says, out last week, I was doling them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you sure you need this? Can Tylenol help, you know?
Yeah, no, you're right.
And to lock them up and to dispose of them after.
Yeah, like you do your alcohol.
Lock the children up?
Most people put them-
No.
I'd have to.
Yeah, well.
But we've heard a lot of stories, and I know one parent said how easy it was. Same thing, the daughter had back pain, was put on OxyContin. The minute the OxyContin was gone, she was still looking for something. They didn't want to refill the OxyContin. What is so easy to get? Heroin, $5 a bag.
Yeah.
$5 a bag, you can get it anywhere. And within no time, she was totally hooked. I mean, she's had severe issues since. And all it started was a little back pain, given a little OxyContin.
Yeah, it was very easy.
So easy and so difficult to come back off of it.
And that's part of what we want to raise awareness about, is how easy it can happen and that it can be to anyone. And I think that sometimes there's stereotypes about drug users and who they are, and we're very, very wrong about that. And I think that's why we would love for people from the community who want to come forward and share their story to say that they grew up in a wonderful town and a great family, ate dinner every night with their family, played sports, got straight A's, and it's still happened to them.
Right.
That's what happens. And I think it's important for the community to realize that, that it's not-
Right.
The stereotypical things that sometimes we can think of.
So the flyers will be sent home to all students, all grades?
So we have different ways that we want to get the word out, but it will be through flyers, it will be through Connect Ed, Ed Line.
Elcat.
Yes.
So all the principals are aware of this already.
Reminder.
The other building principals all know about it also?
I'm actually presenting at the leadership meeting this week.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So I'll share the same information.
And we have represented from each building in the committee as well.
It sounds like you're going to get the word out.
We commend all your hard work. I especially commend you, your courage, or something like this. This is a lot of courage.
Like we said, one life lost is one too many, absolutely.
But again, I also think getting those parents, too, that have younger children, that, you know, this is something that's preventable.
Get them first.
Absolutely.
Because the age range, it's not happening. The deaths are not happening of school-aged children.
Right.
It's happening like 19 to 26. So if we don't get them in school and educate them, we've lost them.
So on the police side, they're seeing an uptick in that kind of activity or issues?
Yes.
Usually late teens to mid twenties.
Well, I'm definitely gonna be interested in knowing.
Thank you very much. We'll keep you updated on our progress.
Thank you all for your support of what we're trying to do. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You, too. Drive safely. It's icy out there. Okay. We're gonna continue. We have 5.1.2. We have the Discussion of Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Needs.
Okay. In your packet, you have a spreadsheet that looks like this without the highlighting. And this was a budget form that we put together so that it made it easier to collect.
Yeah, we're all down on our electronics tonight.
Down on electronics.
We didn't charge them for over the vacation.
Exactly.
Shows.
So basically, this is a little bit revised form from last year that we put together using Google, a Google form. And each person who is submitting a budget request, their username gets recorded. They have to prioritize from, excuse me, their department or their building what priority it is, whether it's the top priority, whether it's the second priority, and depending on how many requests they put in, it keeps going. And then they have to give you a description, cost estimate, and in some cases, if there's a way to possibly fund this, should we not have a situation where we could fund everything through the developed budget for the next year? Are there other ways to possibly fund part or all of the request? And actually, there's one change that I do want to mention. If you look on the first page, the second priority from Gina Flanagan in the high school, $55,000 for that, it would actually, it should be $61,736. I can explain that as we start to go through. $61,736.
So it's the same as the one above it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because basically, as we look to budget, or at least get an estimate for a new position, as we're discussing whether a new position can happen or not, we try to look at what's realistic in terms of recruitment and hiring over the years. And we're not always hiring someone at bachelor step one, nor are we necessarily hiring someone at, you know, the doctoral level, step 12.
Right.
So we zero in on, and generally, we're hiring people probably more or less, they've just gotten their masters. You're required to have your masters within five years. So we budget a number in there that's in the masters column. I think that's masters eight?
Yes.
Yeah, masters eight. And so that's where that number comes from.
That's why it's the same, yeah.
Right.
Makes sense.
So we do, wanted to let you go through this and take a look at it. We have some more information that Ms. Solodars will pass out, which will give you an idea if you take, say, the top priorities from the group, what that accounts for and what the percentage might be in terms of a percentage increase to the budget from last year. The leadership team has discussed this. We've gone through it, and they know that, one, we needed to give you a prioritized list in terms of priorities from the buildings, and they also knew that through presentations that have happened through the fall, you have some priorities that you may want to look at. So they know that, one, it's probably not going to be a list that, where we get to, say, the third priority of each person requesting, and we're able to handle that in the budget. And two, that it may shift in discussion over this meeting and the next few meetings. So they're very aware of that. They've given brief explanation here, which we can certainly add to. And then, as we look to fully form a budget that we're eventually gonna present to the town, we'll have a presentation where we can give you more information on those priorities that we say, yeah, these are the ones we're gonna push forward. I don't know if you want to pass that?
So, Mr. Spesito, page two, top priority, that is what the leadership team said, those one, two, three, four, five positions are their top priority.
These are the top priority from everyone who put in a request.
Oh.
So it's simply taking the top priority-
I see.
From everyone who put in a request. And if, so let me pass this out. I think we'll make it a little easier to read. You wanna, let me just go to the second page first?
Teri, we don't know contractual increases, although, percent of what we've agreed.
Right. We have that in the register, yeah. So to make this sheet a little bit easier, if you go to the second page, what we've been able to put together is, we took the top priority requests from everyone who put in a request. So you see the first one there, Maple Shade, Mountain View. They put in a dual request to share a math coach.
Right.
That was their top priority. Then you have Meadow Brook, Speech and Language Assistant, Speech and- Then you have Meadowbrook, speech and language assistant, speech and language pathologist. It should be, it probably should be SLP assistant, and that would be a point four. High school guidance counselor. This would be the freshman counselor, moving that to a full-time position, which means adding a point four. Burchland Park math teacher. If you look at the sheet where Dr. Allen put in his request, it talks about the fact that the sixth grade right now is where we have sort of a bubble at our middle school. And so, this would be a math teacher that not only handles the needs of the sixth grade, but then would move with that class so that they can continue to focus in on math, which is an area that we've identified needs, intense focus. And then, the final one is a severe special needs teacher. That's a district position, although it would be located at Burchland Park. It's a district program that is now transitioning. It started and still exists in Meadowbrook. It moved to Maple Shade, and now we have a group of students that will be moving to Burchland. And we really aren't able to move the teacher at Maple Shade to Burchland because there are going to be students coming into Maple Shade. So, this would be a district position housed. So, in the middle column, it gives you an idea of the percentage increase. First, on if you were just looking at the salary column, which appropriations breaks out. They ask us to break that out. And then, if you look at the total budget. So, if we were to say, in this budget development, yes, we feel we, we should look at all these top priority needs. You're looking at an increase just with the needs of one point eight-four percent, based on our last year's budget. Then, as you go down to second priority needs, you see how it breaks out. You only have two there. And then, third priority needs, there's one there. So, it gives you an idea each time as you add.
Oh, you've added.
Right. And so, it just gives you an idea of what the percentage increase would be if we were going to put all these needs into our budget development.
How does, I don't know how this works though, because last year, we had a two percent increase and we didn't add anything, right?
Well, that's, we haven't added the front page.
See, I keep jumping.
And Terry will walk us through the front page just. She did an expert job on this and will explain it much better than I will.
So, this is basically the form that the town has put together. And we've used a similar form like this last year. It does have, I edit it to kind of fit the way the school budget works and the way our personnel is slightly different than the town. But, so, the first row is base pay, which means really all of our permanent positions, really. So, those, you can see, you know, it starts with the FY thirteen, expanding FY fourteen. But our FY fifteen budget was what the FY sixteen budget is, the increase and the percentage. So, what this does include, Greg, it does include the contractual increases that we're known about.
Right.
It does not include anything for.
Any contracts outstanding.
Right. That we haven't finalized.
Which is substantial.
Because it's a unit.
It could be.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we don't, so that's the piece that is the unknown.
So, I don't, but.
It does have current steps in there.
It does have current steps.
It does have current steps, yeah. It has, it has.
Percentage increase potential.
Correct. So, if it has not, if it's not currently negotiated in agreement, it's not in here.
So, the increase with the sales is one point oh one percent? One point zero one percent?
Right. And part of what helps that, as you can see on that second or third line down, retirement incentives. So, last year, we had a lot of retirees that's coming in. We don't.
Right.
So, it's actually a fair reduction in that line item, which does help that percentage to be lower than you might think because that line item is really fifty percent of what it was last year. You know, so.
To Greg's point, last year, we had a contractual obligation of two percent. Also, on top of that.
But, so, but if we were potentially to add five new staff members, I know they're all, well, three point FTEs though, we're going to have to deal with any future year contractual increase, which will be exponential on itself, right? So, by adding more staff members, if there's no necessarily a percentage increase this year, we're going to get hit at some point, and then it doesn't become unsustainable in year two or three.
I mean, that's all, all part of the budgeting process.
Yeah, right. But I think it should, a goal of the district to maintain FTEs in that, thus, we don't run into that dilemma as larger units realize maturity, which potentially, you know, tend to go like this anyway. I don't know, I just say that because.
Right. Because you're saying, you're putting someone into the staff structure and then they continue.
Right. And then, they'll be, then we'll assess, we're not realizing necessarily a percentage increase, at least on this piece of paper, but in the next couple of years, we're going to realize some sort of percentage increase, and it will be exponential to any new additional.
The other things I wanted to point out in these numbers.
Depending on what you agree to find.
Right. Well, yeah. It's, but it's inevitable over a three-year contract, I would, not that it is inevitable. I shouldn't say that. There's no inevitability about it, but.
It seems that will be the pattern, if that's.
Historically, that.
Historically.
Historically, that's what it is.
So, included in these figures is the ELL staff position that we were.
Talking about.
Talking about through the program, the coordinate.
Required for that.
That we have been required to do that.
It's in the base pay.
It's in the base figures. It's actually part of a corrective action plan.
Right.
And so, we did discuss this with Eric Madison. Basically, we're required to do that, and it would actually be possibly, would it be fiscally prohibitive way to say it? If we were not to do that. Because generally, what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does, if you don't follow up on your corrective action plan, is what they can do is they withhold your entitlements grants.
Right.
And so, that would be where, so, some of the things that we now pay through grants, they might withhold that money, and so, in the end, you're still losing money by not doing it. It's not a savings. Okay, we didn't do it, so we're saving money. Oh, you actually lost because they withheld a certain amount of grants.
Yeah. Was all of that explained, just, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
But our FTEs are plus one from last year already?
Already.
Actually, I have a list.
No, not necessarily. Yes. Because we've had, in terms of FTEs, we've had a lot of movement in our paraprofessionals.
Okay.
And we've had, in some cases, retirement positions that we didn't fill last year. So, our FTEs might be down slightly.
Can we find out what last year's FTE was?
Yeah, I don't have that with me because I don't have that sheet.
I mean, because that's something that certainly will be looked at.
Oh, that absolutely is.
Maybe you got FTEs.
Right.
Because in the end, that's really.
Right, the bottom numbers, yeah.
Well, I was just going to continue to just let you know what else is in here that we, or what is not. So, there is in here one paraprofessional position that we are currently this year paying for out of the kindergarten tuition account. So, I did bring that forward to put that in this budget. There are still two kindergarten teachers being paid for presumably with this budget out of the kindergarten tuition account.
Next year, that's assumed.
Right.
In this budget, in the base pay. But the Perry took out of the grant.
Correct.
Basically, what we've discussed is the idea that you have a revolving fund that has come, been developed through the tuition for full-day kindergarten.
Yeah.
If we start to move to offering full-day kindergarten, one, two things are happening. One, the bond is going to be finished this year.
Right.
However, there will be money in the revolving fund that only can be used for the kindergarten program.
How much?
We don't know.
I'm working on these figures.
Work on finding that out. So, what we, in an informal way, have discussed is if we pursue full-day kindergarten, we can actually start to wean off, so to speak, the revolving fund, where right now, you have three staff members being paid through the revolving fund. Next year, the para would come into the operational budget.
Okay.
Following year, depending on how much money's there, you would move one of those teachers in your operational budget. And then, in that third year, you'd, if, depending on how much money's in the revolving fund.
Right.
You would, so that eventually, you would have your full kindergarten program in the operational budget, and you would be running hopefully a full-day kindergarten program.
Right.
The other piece to that is, is that right now, the state looks at our half-day program as really they cut in, cut your chapter seventy in half. So, if you have sixty students there, you're really getting chapter seventy for thirty students. So, if we were to go to a full-day program, eventually, not next year necessarily, but eventually, we'd be receiving more chapter seventy.
But not substantial, it's not substantial to pay for two teachers.
And the first year is fairly substantial. And I didn't bring them with me tonight, but I can certainly do that at a future meeting. And for instance, if we were to start that in FY sixteen, it would be FY seventeen, that the change in the chapter seventy would come.
We wouldn't see it the first.
You wouldn't see it the first year. But that's why if you had, you know, that revolving fund that you're still paying teachers out of it and phase them into your budget, it would work that way.
Is there a six-figure revolving fund? Will there be potentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It'd have to be for us to wean off.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. It's balance, I, yeah.
Yeah, it will be. We've been conservative with how we use it, and the town has been too, so.
Now, when the bond's done being paid, and that's what tuition theoretically is going toward, and the account that you're talking about is just whatever's left over, just a pad at the end of paying, paying off the bond, right?
Right. The fund was used to, yeah.
But, you know, because we started with so many teachers, they were half-day teachers, there were no pairs, and as you were having trouble maintaining and getting the extra, you know, speech pathologist or whatever it is, could we, I know we don't want to charge anything, but just lower, substantially lower the amount that we charge, use the money that's in the fund as we can, but substantially lower the amount that we charge for full day, but still be able to maintain those salaries under that so we don't lose other programs when they say you can only have a one percent increase. You know, I'm not trying to make money off the kindergarten kids, but we have them. All those extra stu, teachers and paras we're paying for now because of this.
You won't get off.
Well, actually, the revolving account's only paying for three staff members.
Okay.
Those two, Mrs. Allard, your point.
But quietly through the years, all those staff members, and deservedly so, have been added onto our regular budget.
Yes. What we've done, no.
No. Currently, they're not. Those three are not.
Not those three, but all the others.
When we first started the program, yes.
If we, if we added a staff member to the revolving account, generally, what we would try to do with the towns, we would work with the town to eventually move that person into the operational budget.
Okay.
However, when budgets got extremely tight over the last few years, that has not happened because, just as you're saying.
And I mean, how many more years are they going to be tight going?
Forever.
Well, that's why you can't, you can't take this leap until we discuss this with appropriations and say, listen, here's, here's a plan of how you can get there, and it's not a huge jump each year to the operational budget.
Well, if we go full, it would be. Are we going to need an additional teacher if we go full day? Because we have one teacher that teaches two sections.
That's right.
I don't believe so.
So, with the two, then become three?
I don't believe so, but we will.
Based on numbers.
It's based on numbers right now because the two half-day programs are really small.
Oh, okay.
They're really small.
Okay.
And so, you would average probably now somewhere around twenty, which is ideal. Even if you went full day, you kept, you spread our students across.
Right.
Now, what comes in the future, once you get to a staff of full day, we're only going to be able to hire X number, and that's it. So, in the future, we have population swell. You might be at twenty-one or twenty-two before you hire another teacher.
I guess my concern is a little bit feeling like, okay, you know, don't price gouge, lower that rate so it's sustainable, so that when we get, okay, you can only have one percent this year, and you can only have one percent next year. And the year after that, it's maybe one and a half percent. We're cutting teachers at this point, and we're going to stop charging for kindergarten.
But the issue is though, Beth, I think we then are not providing full-day kindergarten to all students, which for me is the ultimate goal, that this would be our opportunity. So, we would still have half-day because those not willing to pay tuition would only be allowed to have half-day. This allows all students to have full day.
Right.
That's what the difference with your scenario would be as well.
But I'm also feeling like we've got all these other things that we have to do.
Yeah. No, I mean, your point's well taken. There's always going to be needs.
And unless you can show those half-day kids aren't functioning as they move through, and it's not the best scenario, I understand, I know this. But, you know, I'm just saying we have to protect.
Right.
But I also think that was part of Greg's point too with the FTEs of not always just keep adding.
Right, we have to look what we add.
And so, actually, I mean, we've become very creative over the last few years. I mean, obviously, last year, when we had to reduce our budget request. But as we look at retirement positions, one of the things that we have to ask ourselves is, okay, we'd like to fill that position, but do we need to fill it in how it was defined in the person who's now retiring with it? Can we, can we do something such as, oh, maybe we can move to a math coach or someone who maybe is part-time classroom teacher on the secondary level and coach? You become creative.
Whatever, whatever the needs are at the particular time.
Right, right.
And then, and I don't see that changing.
Yeah, it has to be a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, and this is, you have to get creative within.
Yeah. I just don't want to see teachers at a higher level having to be let go because we're offering full-day kindergarten when what we have is working, and even if we reduce the rate, it would still work. As parents want to like stab me right now because I know it's a huge amount of money coming out of people's pockets, but I just, just keep this in the back of my head.
But that's where, that's where the, no, it's great. It's a good idea, but that's where the creativity goes so that you're not cutting positions.
Yeah.
You just have to be flexible enough to move to what the demands are.
I mean, that's, our goal is not to, obviously, we want to put students in the best possible position, and we're a people industry, so when you cut positions, you're not putting students in the best possible learning situation.
But when this bond becomes paid, this is, I think this is our real only opportunity to realize full-day kindergarten because there, in the future, we won't have this opportunity. Those funds will go to something else, and we'll be hooked on them. And within our budget, they'll be a source of revenue that we count on. We count on that revenue now because it pays for the bond for the building, but when that bond is up, that's the time to do it. And that's why I really feel like this is, this is the time to do it.
Right, I agree. All right, well, I know, Rich, you have something.
It's on the budget now. On its first page, are we level funding all non-salary expenses?
So, I want to tell you that we just haven't really finished all of those. So, this is hypothetically level funded, and some, many of them will be. I sat for a good portion of the morning today with Dr. Welch and her secretary going over all the audit, district tuitions and, you know, contracted services. So, I'll be spending, you know, some time tomorrow and probably Wednesday putting all those numbers together. Many of these will be level funded. For instance, the transportation fuel. I think, you know, we're at a good level with that this year. Fuel costs have been actually down, although we're on a fixed price.
When do we tend to lock that, Terry?
What's that?
What month do we lock that?
It's locked in through the collaborative, and I think they usually do that in January or February.
Okay, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
The last time I was over there.
So, I think we're already locked in for this year.
Yeah, we are locked in for this year. The last time I was over there, they were working on next year.
Okay.
So, it's a priority, yeah.
Yeah.
And I did talk to Paul Schroeder, who is the, he's the field guru over there.
Yeah. So, we will have, you know, many of these probably will be, but I just need to go through them. Just wanted to point out that we did, in the contracted services, I just made a notation that there is a minus thirty thousand dollars, which was an adjustment to the athletics, which you'll see up in the focus and department heads up in the salary. We had talked about doing that at the last year, for this year, and then creating that into the budget. Although that, that savings in the contracted service will probably be negated by need to increase that contracted services by about thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, comes and goes. So, by next week, when we look at this, I will have all of those.
So, use your, this is just a staff structure we have right now.
Yes, it is.
No, this is the final one.
If I take the two seven seven, two twenty-five figure, right? And add it to the high priority needs, two twenty-seven, seven four six?
Right.
What percentage increase was?
One point eight.
One point eight four?
Of the total budget or two point one eight of the salary, just salaries.
But if I, the budget increase, we're looking at a one point eight four budget increase right now.
Right, without adding in the non-salary.
Okay. I'm not saying.
And to your point, without adding in anything that comes from negotiations.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not saying I agree with all the top priorities, but since wanting the full picture what you're presenting us.
Right, right.
It's the beginning.
On each, each full-time sixty-one thousand, the number that we use is point two percent on our salary.
Yeah.
So each one you add adds a point two percent. Terry, does that sound right?
Because you're adding another position.
You're adding a position. Every position would bring us up.
Point two.
Point two.
Roughly. So.
I said that you'd be doing this in your head.
Right, so you do five and then you add one.
It makes sense.
No, it's, it's always impressive.
I just make it up.
I did it with all my notes. I said Greg will be doing this in his head.
He's doing his good mental math. Very proud of him.
I'm losing all of mine. All right, so what are we, what's the plan?
Time-wise, so next week?
Well, we need Monday.
Right, we have a meeting at five, five, and we'll try to put this whole snapshot together, which is an incredible amount of work for Mrs. Olajars, which I, I do want to give her a compliment of how much she was doing over, and she was sick, and we both probably sound a little sick over the holidays, and she was putting all this together. But the, we wanted to give you all the prior, the requests and then get your feedback on certainly where you think financially we should be in terms of our budget development, what makes sense, but also just making sure that you have a chance to look at the background reasons for why the request was put in and how that meets with your view in terms of priorities that you feel the district should be looking at. Is that, that's something that the leadership team has discussed and they realized that this has been a pretty good working relationship over the last few years in terms of recognizing what the district needs are and where focus should be. But ultimately, it becomes the school committee's budget.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Good start, good start.
All right, so we are going to move on to our six point one discussion of capital plan priorities.
Okay, this is.
Back to the drawing board.
Yeah, somewhat back to the drawing board. Just to sort of preface this discussion, as you know, but I don't know how public it has become, we were not unfortunately invited in to the eligibility round from our statement of interest that was sent to the Mass School Building Authority. And actually, the reality is now that I've spoken to Diane Sullivan, who's our contact at the MSBA, they haven't invited anyone in yet. They've just pared down. And so that was interesting.
So we didn't make the pairing?
We didn't make the pairing down.
We didn't make the pairing down. So they'll probably invite people or districts in. They received a hundred and eight statements of interest last year, and most likely in January, they will, they have another meeting and they'll invite a certain number of districts from those hundred and eight. In previous years, they, two thousand thirteen, they received two hundred and one statements of interest and they invited nineteen in. Two thousand twelve, they received two hundred and eighty statements of interest and they invited sixteen in. So they're down considerably with only a hundred and eight.
Yeah.
I said, I thought that our school committee, I'm talking with Diane Sullivan, that when the window of opportunity opens up again, which is January ninth, this Friday, that we would probably start the process and add to our statement of interest if that's still the consensus of this group. We will add information. We don't have to start at ground zero again, but we will add information such as information from our NESC visit. One thing that we will have to do, we will have to do that vote form again, where the committee votes and to have the superintendent submit the statement of interest, and then we go to the selectmen. So that's something, and that window of time is still January to April. Second part of that, I did ask, because number nine is on our list here, is Meadowbrook Exterior Renovations, predominantly which is windows, or which are windows? I think which is, because it was the one project anyway. We won't deal with the grammatical correctness at the moment. The accelerated repair, I don't have all the forms yet because the window also opens on January ninth, but it truly is an accelerated timeframe. You have, or we have, from January ninth till February thirteenth to get some type of abbreviated statement of interest, so it wouldn't be the, you know, thirty pages plus all the added items, attachments that we sent last year around Meadowbrook's project. Windows are an item, as long as they're over twenty years old, that would qualify. However, we would also have to have that vote endorsement of the school committee and selectmen have that all done by the February thirteenth. You have to actually have it there by February thirteenth, so we'd have to get, it opens January ninth and we'd have to get this done.
You'd have to have it done then by the time you get the meeting with the selectmen and our meetings.
I mean, I'm not too, not too worried about having it accomplished here, because I know we're meeting the twelfth, we're meeting the nineteenth.
Right, right.
So we can get it on an agenda. We'd be getting on the selectmen's agenda.
Right, that's exactly it.
What Diane Sullivan said today, and I'll use her words because it's not public yet, she said, projects for the accelerated repair program would be selected leading into the summer. What that indicates, because they haven't set a date yet, I think that people would be invited in somewhere in the June timeframe, possibly. So if we were to establish and get that, establish a sense of urgency and we get invited into that eligibility period, then we only have sixty days to have the town vote and say that they commit, if, if, I don't know if you're reading the stories, Hannah Wilbraham put in for a roof, I believe on their middle school. They were invited into the eligibility period. I think they were invited in either in August or September. They had their special town meeting and it was voted down. So they got invited in, but the town didn't basically vote to put up the money to do the, the actual project. Just like with the regular statement of interest, if you get invited in, you have to go and submit the warrant article for the full amount of the project. However, you get reimbursed as soon as you start paying.
Right.
So if you're, you know, similar to the high school, if it's a hundred million and they're going to reimburse us fifty percent, they start paying their fifty million right away.
Now, the wind, Meadowbrook, did that include the doors too?
We did have doors in the pricing. What I don't know about and have to talk further is, I didn't see on their list doors being part of it. I would like to put doors in there.
Yeah, because they're, they're pretty, they do, they're kind of a sticky side, you know?
Yeah, if we could get the windows.
We're having problems with the doors. The, the actual project that's on our capital plan is windows and doors.
Okay, right.
Whether I can get doors into the accelerated repair program, I don't know. So what I did say to her, because what she was describing to me, this Diane Sullivan from MSBA, is that it's all about urgency. And so they experienced with these hundred and eight statements of interest, a greater range or degree of urgency than they've ever experienced before, such as one district put in for a new building and they finished off last year in that building and then it was condemned. And so they had to distribute the students to other buildings. And so that is a type.
You can't wait that long.
I know, I know.
That's a problem.
That's abusive to the students and the school and everything.
It is unfair.
So, I, I've just given you the, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
So the, the, what we, the new strategy that we've been working on is that I, I talk to Diane once a week now. She enjoys my phone conversations and even though Secretary Malone is going to be out of office this week, he was going to call on our behalf to the head of the MSBA, so, you know, we'll continue to work that angle as well.
Now, you said the decision would be made in June on the accelerated?
For inviting people in.
For inviting people in.
Possibly.
So when, yeah, but it would be after the annual town meeting.
Leading into the summer.
Yeah, but it would be after in July.
I was just saying the timing, the timing.
You would have to have an aug- by August. If, if we were invited in June, we have to have some type of town meeting in August.
I thought there was some sort of a waiting period between town meetings.
As late in August as possible, as close as possible.
That's why it's thirty days on a roll.
I thought you said sixty.
Sixty.
Is it sixty days?
Between town meeting.
Oh.
Between town meetings.
Yeah, there has to be a certain number of times.
There's a certain, and I'm not sure what that is, but.
Now, does the MSBA think about this at all, that there's bylaws we all have to abide by?
I said, well, our, our, I said, we would have to have a special town meeting, then request one in August if we were picked up in June, let's say. I said, we just had a town meet, we would have just had a town meeting in May.
Right.
She just said, yes.
Well, they want you to jump through all kinds of hoops if they're going to give you the money.
Right.
I said, okay, just as long as I'm understanding.
Well, it's still worth pursuing because.
What was the dollar amount of them total?
That was, it's, it's over.
One point seven million?
I think it's like one point seven. That's with doors.
But even, you know what?
It's a lot of money.
Even if you don't get the doors, we get the windows, I understand the doors are bad.
I don't even know that we have time to get that in this year because if we don't have any con- we don't have time to discuss with capital to request even an eight hundred thousand, half it, which we're not, we're requesting the one point six.
Right.
I don't know how realistic that is to say that we, we get capital planning to recommend that in July of this year if we're still working on this year's capital budget. Basically, they have to put aside for us eight hundred thousand dollars potentially for a project.
Right.
How fast do we have to do the project? Do we have like so much time because you can't do it that year?
You have to commit with the money.
Right.
By the summer.
Yeah, well, so you'd have to take next year's and commit to eight hundred thousand.
But the thing is, yeah, you couldn't do it until probably the summer of two thousand.
But it would also.
Yeah, you're right.
Which is what the town, what they're trying to do with Town Hall, and I don't know how successful they're going to be. Because they're trying to ask for a three-year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commitment, but you can't have, I don't know how you get a three-year commitment because each year is different and you never know what other projects will be the next couple of years.
Right.
So I don't know what capital planning and appropriations have, what slant they've taken on that request. I know it is a request, I don't know.
The other thing that we have to keep in mind is you pass it at a town meeting, it still has to go to a ballot box.
That was my next thing, because is it an, it's a ballot.
It's a dead exclusion.
Well, if you go for dead exclusion.
If you go for dead exclusion.
If we go for a straight-up capital project.
Right.
Oh, right.
But it's not, but yes, to your, yes. If we go dead exclusion.
If we go dead exclusion.
Well, but then it'd go to dead exclusion.
But they would actually have to show that they're willing to vote in the full one point seven.
Yeah.
Right.
Not half.
The town.
Yeah.
Yes.
Even though they would get half.
Try educating people on, on that.
Oh, no, I understand.
This, this one point seven is really eight.
It would be good practice for the high school.
You know, it's tough. It's just a tough.
No, it is. It's a tough sell.
You're right. It is a very tough sell.
But I don't know if, if capital would ever commit, because you got to commit to the whole amount.
Right, and it goes back to the question we had with capital appropriations when we were there at their meeting that, do we want to have a town-wide debt exclusion, you know, campaign on, all right, here's what we want to do collectively over the next couple of years, here's how we're going to fund it, it's going to require some debt exclusion, it's inevitable, at some point it's going to be inevitable.
It is.
We can't, we can't pay for it out of taxation or.
Or keep putting, or keep putting Band-Aids on things like we're doing now.
No, I, I spoke with, I spoke with Gordon earlier about that same thing, saying that it might be worth it even just in a small group to get together with capital appropriations, just to let them know, our statement of interest didn't get accepted. What are we doing as a town to really take care of all these other needs that we have because they're not small numbers? These are big ticket items that.
Yeah, they're not going away.
And exactly, so how, and I know that Eric Madison did touch on it at that night, but said he doesn't want to get into any detail. Well, maybe now it's time we get together and talk in more detail about what are we doing going forward? Because if we can't look at the high school right now and we want to look at this accelerated program, what do we do?
Do we look at Maple Shade?
Accelerated program.
I can follow you here.
It would be not a whole year.
I mean, we can start working on developing, and we'll have an idea of what it looks like, so we can start answering those questions and put it in next year's as well.
I think, I think for us to commit to the accelerated program, we would have to make whatever that project that we're requesting be our number one priority request, because otherwise it's, it doesn't make sense on how we're requesting it. So unless it's our number one, I don't know how we, well, other than not all of our projects are eligible for the accelerated. So I get that as well, but as number, whatever we're, it's eight or something now.
But this could be, this could be one A.
I don't know how to justify that.
One A with.
But it's not though.
No, no, but one A with that conversation that, you know.
But even at eight hundred thousand, I don't know that it's my number two or number one.
Well, I agree.
If the cost was not one point seven, it's actually eight because we have reimbursement. Does that change when we put it in the list or does it put, keep it at the same point? And if it does, then I don't know how we request, I don't know how we.
But then, then it becomes how, they would be telling us how, they would be recommending to us how to fund it. They may turn around and say, go dead exclusion, because they weren't, they wouldn't entertain it. We don't know.
So go outside of the capital project process.
Yes, but we'd have to have that conversation with them.
Their recommendation to do that.
We would need both of them.
Which is, I don't think is going to happen though, because this, it goes back to that same question as with, whether we should go for dead exclusion at some point collectively as a town, or, you know, we go rogue and we just as a school department say, all right, we're going to the ballot and we'll see if the town wants to do it without, you know, and that's always an option, but I don't.
I think you had brought that point up before when we were first discussing this capitalist, that when we had these large number items with the renovations, you were like, well, maybe this is a completely separate conversation we need to have. Like, you don't even put it there because you know the money is not there for this kind of work.
Yeah.
But I think Southwick, I'm not sure if this is right, they, they at one point did almost like a campus kind of thing where they, they, all of their schools happen beyond one, or one of these areas, or one, one larger piece of property. And I think they went in for accelerated, or maybe it wasn't accelerated, but it was on, on some level so that they could do multiple repairs system-wide of all their schools, and they put in one big thing. And maybe if we don't do it this year, we really think about, how do we go about this process? Get capital on, do.
That discussion.
MSB, MSBA.
I think they had a debt exclusion.
Yeah, that's what you need to know.
But if we could get half for all those things and we just make it one, okay, this is what we're doing, this is what our schools need, we're going to plunk this in front of you guys and, and hope that you understand it's necessary.
But you need, I think you need to get invited into the MSBA process for this building, like we originally started, and then go for the whole shooting match. You know, this is what we need. But if you do it twice, I don't know, that second time, it may not, it may not pass. I understand what you're saying, and it would be like the town-wide thing.
Right.
Lump everything together and say, okay, this is what we're doing, this is what we've been accepted in for, this is what it's going to cost, and here's the reimbursement. And we're a couple of years away from that.
Well, that's the prob- that's the issue with that though. How do you wait a couple of years?
I know.
It's even longer, right.
I know.
So I, I, my thought is we go without MSBA and we go it alone for not a new building, obviously, but for, for.
For the list.
For the list.
But if we can get an other town department list and we go for a debt exclusion, then put it up for vote. Say, if the town wants to fund it, town wants to, they don't, then we're just going to deal with what we have. But at some point, we have to put it to the decision of the voters whether or not they want to fund these improvements that are timely and necessary, that we all agree on that.
I, no, I agree with that, but, and, and if you're willing, if you, what you're saying is, everybody get together and, okay, it's thirty million dollars.
Right.
I'm in favor of it. And then we put the high school off to the side, and when we get invited in, we go back.
Or we put in projects in the high school and.
Because it's still a ten-year, not right, because you're like ten years off at this point.
If we wait now, so now we wait another year to, or not even a year, like it's starting to come up next month.
You're looking at eight years from now?
It's already, yeah, nine year, you know, now we go on nine year.
It might be worth it to do these things for ten years and.
We look at it again as what we can do.
Right.
Short, long-term, in the next ten years. What's worth doing for the next ten years.
And capital is.
So that's why we're having this discussion, right? Because we were going to talk about the last year.
Yeah, exactly, we have to discuss.
Capital, they're, they are fiscally sound individuals and they're going to see, okay, we're getting this at half price and maybe we don't have the eight hundred thousand dollars, but how can we work around this? Because they know they don't want to pay the full one and a half plus million for, you know, so maybe they would be willing to at least think about it.
The complete capital budget last year was one million dollars. They're asking for eighty percent of that for our number nine priority.
Yeah.
And maybe we get it, maybe we'll, we'll have to bring it to special timing and we'll have to go to the ballot box. And if it doesn't pass, then we haven't funded any other projects.
But it's worth a conversation with them, to have them help us and, you know.
I agree with that.
You know, we don't know, we don't even know where, we don't even know where capital is going to be.
To have the same discussion with them, yeah.
I mean, we have no idea what that capital budget's going to be.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And that's, that's another thing. I mean, are they going to establish, let's say, a regular line item in the budget for capital projects?
They actually, they actually started.
All right, is that coming down the road? But then again, that's not.
Two percent of the previous year's budget.
Okay, that again isn't going to encompass everything that's going on in this town, not just alone, not alone.
The schools.
It was a five million dollars with the request this year, something like that.
Yeah.
So.
Four or five, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's about a million dollars.
Right, two percent.
Right, fifty-six million?
Yep.
Yeah. So. So what's the recommendation then? Are we looking to change priorities?
Well, the, I, my recommendation, I don't know that you can really change priority one. I think you still, we still need to.
The only change we could potentially make would be the number.
Right, you could reduce from five to three, which, I mean, it's still risky, because we haven't purchased new buses in five years. So, so we put off that final third leg. When I arrived into the district, we were in our third stage of renewing the fleet and then it stopped. Not because of my arrival.
Or maybe, yeah. Well, I think, to that point, is it worth the conversation? Okay, we get three this year, can we get two next year? Can you, can we somehow, can we somehow have that conversation? We need, we need some sort of a commitment to start renewing this fleet before something major happens.
So we're also working on trying to get an estimate on what trade-in value our current buses have. So perhaps we can reduce the eighty-five to something, you know, less than maybe, you know, we could get
You mean eighty-five thousand per bus?
Right.
Right, so maybe we could get four instead of five, you know, for the same price or whatever, you know. Alright, so we'll keep five on it for now.
Well, I wouldn't change it. I would, it's what we get, you know, I wouldn't change the number.
Right.
Right, because if we ask for four, you might get three. If you ask for five, you might get four.
Well, then let's ask for eighteen and see what happens.
You're not gonna get five. You won't get eighteen or seventeen or sixteen.
But maybe nine, on your theory, we'll get nine.
Yeah, exactly. Well, when our teachers who are quite savvy are doing their e-leaf grants, they'll do things like that. They'll ask, but then somebody asks for half of that amount for something else, and then they get two, they get what they need. So they're smart, so you're smart.
I, I'm gonna put out, I think our capital project plan, uh, priorities stay as is. We talked hypothetically the last ten minutes, I, I don't see anyone changing anything right now that would help us.
Well, my only thought to that is, if we're looking at nine or ten years now, potentially, right, the high school, then do we, the one I, the only, the one I would really reassess would be classroom furniture.
Right, that's, I, yeah.
Because I think it has a direct impact on learning. I think there's two, I, I've been convinced there's value in that.
You do, I say, I, I really need to learn about that.
No, I, I've seen-
It bothers me to see Maple Shade's got, they want furniture, but Mountain View doesn't, so Maple Shade's gonna get new furniture, but, I mean, Mountain, you know, Mountain View's gonna get hot water and Maple Shade's gonna get furniture. How is that fair to children? On any level, and Elaine, Elaine Santanello can't put furniture down until she gets the water fixed.
Right.
So I need to hear how the furniture works. And I really love to, it's important, I want it on there, but if it's done for one, we've gotta really, in all fairness. Okay, so, I mean, leave it there, it's great, but I'm, I'm just saying, I, I'd like to learn more about how it impacts the students.
I'm sure that, um, any of the principals would, would walk you through.
I, I know.
I've, you know, I've been, well, I've been to schools out in eastern part of the state, and it's just the way, the configuration of the desks, it changes the, it's, they're not even desks, some of them are stand-up podiums, depending on what these, no, it's whatever kids feel comfortable with.
I know, I've seen, I've heard about all these things.
And it's amazing what the configuration of a classroom looks like. It really is.
I'd have to see furniture in Brooklyn, have him explain it to me. It would make me happy. So even for the high school classroom furniture, to move it up, but what would you do? Move the-
I'd swap it with number four.
That's what I mean, swap it or push it down?
I'd swap it. And the reason why I say that is, I, again, and I spoke to this on, on behalf of the playscape at Mountain View, that, that there is value in that as well. However, past history has shown that there's not always a perceived value in that by those who made recommendations for such things. So strategically speaking, and they got new swings at Mountain View, right? So there's got something new over there now, funded by the P T O.
Oh, did they go in already?
Yep, they're in. And so they've got something that's great. I, I believe there's value, I wish, I, you know, I hope we can fund it somehow. But for me, and I think, you know, they're totally two separate value amounts, what are the, do we have any, anybody have?
Our school's, um, I get away, yeah.
Furniture is like fifty-nine.
Our school furniture is fifty-nine, four, five, four.
For the high school?
For the high school?
High school, who was at the Mountain View playscape?
Yeah.
Looks like it's-
Twenty-six or something?
Thirty-six, oh, thirty-five, yeah.
That's a-
Thirty-five, oh, two-three.
That sounds about right. Then I would definitely swap the two. They're not that far off. They're off, but they're not that far off.
Yeah. And I would move it myself, but you had, I, the fact that if we get reimbursement, yeah, but now-
Now that's pushed off sometimes, so now we, is it time to make an investment this year? Because now, say we apply this year and then we get invited, well, if we, then we're definitely under the furniture next year, but if we go for it this year, maybe we get it this year, and so we get eight years out of it, right? And then we get to bring it with us.
Right.
Right?
Okay, realistically, do we think we're gonna get to number four?
I know I talked you out of that. But things have changed.
Well, realistically, do we think we could get down to number four?
Yeah, we thought, we, we thought we had a good shot at getting, how far down? Well, it's, what, what's the number I said, I forget every time.
I thought, we thought it would get to the equipment, the playscape.
Number four?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so we could potentially still get there. The, the problem, the, the, what is it, Ellen in the room, is number six. Cause that's gonna be asked to be moved up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm okay with leaving that there.
I'm okay with leaving it there.
Yeah, because-
So should we make, I was gonna say, take a vote?
Make a motion that, uh, on our capital projects prioritized list, we flip-flop number four to number ten and number ten to number four.
Okay.
Take it.
Motion made and seconded by Greg. Any further discussion?
Just doing this because a little of new information.
Right.
Greg said about the swings being put in, then with the answer, we gotta ask our Y, so there's new information, it's compelled us to do this.
Both pieces relevant in why we're requesting a change to capital. You gonna put in some sort of cover to that?
Yeah, I'll put a cover letter and, uh, send it.
Okay, um, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. That carries forward, five to zero. Okay, that was good.
Okay, good.
Okay, that's, it's a tough decision and we'll see what happens.
Keep working.
I'll keep making weekly phone calls to M and P.
That's right.
Thank you, hey, squeaky wheel, right?
That's right.
And, uh, I don't know, maybe we don't do repairs anymore. That's the, that's the thing about it, it's a test twenty-two.
I know.
If you don't maintain your building, even though they say you get credit for maintaining your building, they're, they're, that's not true.
It just allows them to push you off.
For her to use that as the example, that they were condemned, right? So they let the building go so bad that they spend no money on maintenance, that they no longer can teach children that. Then they're wrong to say that you'll get credit if you maintain your building. It's, it's not true, you can say it all you want.
You can tell that for us.
Well, you said it on air, it's a fact.
Because, because maintenance also takes away the urgency, right? And urgency is a number one factor as well, then we're, that's two strikes, we're already out, you know?
Yeah, hey, possibly if we continue to build the rapport that last couple of weeks we've had. Maybe I can get her out here for a visit and show her the electrical closet there.
Electrical.
I know, we can't do anything else.
That would be the urgency.
Right.
Right.
So.
Okay, so we'll have to keep discussing that. Alright, so we're gonna move on to seven point one, our draft of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year calendar.
Okay, in your package, you have a, um, version of the calendar and online, I know, it's, uh, it's color online.
I got it.
So I can share the color for, you know, anybody who has, I think, uh, Mrs. Letty has a color one there.
Yeah, I got it.
Sounds good.
Basically, we've been able to establish the first day of school, um, convocation and the last day of school, and in this version of the calendar, this draft, establish our parent conferences and our half-day and one full-day professional development. So if, if the committee wants to accept this draft, it, it's a draft, but it certainly would give parents an idea of when school would start for next year. That's probably not going to change with anything in negotiations. The one change might be bumping out by a day or two, uh, the end of the year. That would be the, the, probably change at this point that may come out of negotiations. So this would enable us to at least get it up online and give parents an opportunity to know when school starts, cause next year, with, um, Labor Day actually being as late as it possibly can be, we actually start on September one.
Yeah.
Um, following the same format that we've used in past years.
Which is kinda nice, almost.
Right, and I think, I'm not sure parents realize that, cause we did get some phone calls around the idea, oh, any chance that you can start in September? But actually, it will be.
I don't wanna be going to school till July first.
Right, oh, you're, you're wanting a change.
Now, I'm a fake, I, I like it after Labor Day. I'm like, oh, let, leave August alone, this is good. My one concern with this, and it's a big concern for this past, um, calendar, because seeing as I'm being negative tonight, I'm, I'm having some concerns about how graduation is being done this year. Friday night with a potential Sunday.
Right.
We're blocking off, uh, an entire weekend, people have to hold hostage, um, and that's really how I feel, with all due respect. Um, I understand why, but I think it should be part, and I believe in the past, it's always been part of our main calendar.
It gets put in by the high school.
Yeah.
Alright, but, you know, I, I don't, it's not, when you go on our website this year, it's not on the calendar.
Okay, so we can certainly add it.
Especially this year of all years, and I don't think half of the parents are even aware. I know they've put it out there.
But it is, it is on their website, and it is in their updates, as well as newsletters.
I just think that this is-
It should be more verbal, more vocal about it, so this way.
Yeah, I think, so, you know, if it's on the calendar, it's not on the calendar right now on the website, uh, on this calendar, right.
No, on the, on the district calendar, you're right, it's not.
So, you know, grandparents or people who want to-
I was just gonna say, other family members or people, right.
That don't think that ed line exists, and as great as ed line is, it really is a difficult thing in that you, as a parent, you gotta, oh, I gotta check it, I gotta check it, I gotta check it, where you don't even get, hey, new information, even an email, new information's been put up about graduation, check ed line. Anything like that, but I, I think it's important that it's on this calendar.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that in there. You're talking for this year? Cause I don't have graduation, I don't have graduation for next year.
For this calendar, for this calendar right here, when it happens, you know, I think we should know when it's gonna be and make it part of this calendar before we approve calendars. I, I guess we should know what's happening. I, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm off there, but, um, oh, that's the most important date, the culmination of all that we do, and for it not to be, um, on this, I think is big. Okay, so.
Good point.
Alright, so again, we'll, we'll need to make a motion tonight to accept the draft.
Let's draft over.
So know that we can make changes to this, um, but it just will at least be out there so that the parents can have an idea.
Why are we announcing it again? Why is it a draft?
I don't think we, uh, fully, um, researched this full calendar, possibly, and even our type of other changes we might wanna make in the collaboration.
Oh.
And our, and the, now, my committee's still-
Should we, can we, are we, do we have the ability to approve the first day of school tonight?
Yeah, basically, what you'd be doing is approving first day of school and, and vacations, as well as your, your half-days.
That's okay. If we can do that.
Well, that's why I just wrote it, that's why I just said it as a draft, if you wanna get specific and just say-